...broader economic development. As you know, it's been a top priority of the Bloomberg administration to diversify the city's economy and position it for continued future leadership. As tech fields become more prominent, there is increasing shortage of individuals with the skills sought by companies and also. Whether you're a media startup looking for programmers to build a big app, or an established company looking for data scientists to analyze and understand customer behavior, there is far more demand for these workers than there is supply. Applied Sciences NYC addresses this mismatch by building upon the strength of our technology ecosystem to attract even more of the best and brightest individuals from around the world to New York City. By creating a new world-renowned Applied Sciences campus and accelerating the expansion of our existing institutions, we will alter the city's economic trajectory to become a leading center for tech innovation in the decades to come. Cornell NYC Tech will dramatically increase the number of engineering graduate students and faculty, creating a more robust talent pipeline that growing companies desperately need. It will generate billions in overall economic activity over the next three decades, as well as meaningful tax revenues to the city. The campus will create thousands of construction and permanent jobs and facilitate the creation of hundreds of startups. The business community, particularly the tech sector, has embraced Cornell and Western Tech enthusiastically. Google generously donated thousands of square feet in its shelter promises for Cornell to build and launch immediately as the Roseville Island campus is being constructed. This past January, the first cohort of students enrolled in the Beta Class to pursue a master's in computer science. Additional degree programs are planned in fields such as electrical engineering and information science, as well as a technical area at MBA. These programs will have an entrepreneurial focus and will encourage linkages with local businesses and community partners. From the outset, our intention was always for the selected university to become an integral part of the city. Through all those processes, Cornell has demonstrated their commitment to this ideal through vigorous engagement with residents, businesses, civic and elected leaders to discuss their plans and understand and address their concerns. While they will discuss specific measures in greater detail, Cornell has made clear it will seek to minimize disruptions to residents. They've also committed to provide service services and infrastructure improvements, such as publicly accessible living space and rebuilding the Loop Road. After the campus is built, Cornell plans to remain actively engaged, naming a liaison to work with the community and providing space for Roosevelt Island groups and organizations to meet. They're off to a fast start on their commitment to create educational enhancement opportunities for students and teachers, agreeing to work with several city schools this year. This complements another Bloomberg administration priority of significantly increasing computer science education opportunities for New York City students. While Applied Sciences focuses on the graduate school level, we believe it is critically important to encourage younger students to pursue studies that will equip them with the job for the future. This past fall, in close partnership with the private sector, the city launched the first academy for software engineering, a high school focused on computer science, and will open a second location in the Bronx this fall. In addition, the DOE's software engineering pilot will establish curriculums in 10 middle and 10 high schools in all five boroughs, reaching thousands of students. Well, graduates of Cornell and USC Tech will be immediately valuable for companies looking to hire and grow. These middle and high school students are also an essential part of our strategy to strengthen and solidify New York City's long-term economic prospects. In what remains a challenging economic climate for many, we take very seriously the charge to maximize returns to the city whenever deploying precious taxpayer misuses. This project is a great demonstration of getting back for our buck, and Cornell NYC Tech is already and will continue to generate considerable private philanthropy support. While much remains to be done on a project of this scale, Cornell and the Technion have made enormous strides and we're pleased that the city's seed investment has already generated substantial returns. A bold program like Cornell NYC Tech can only succeed with the broad support of the city's academic, business, civic, and government leaders. We understand that many of you have been personally encouraging and involved, and we sincerely appreciate your support. The mayor's initiative was created with the long-term future of New York City in mind, and its impact will be felt for generations. With new students and faculty already in New York City and a major construction project about to begin, the near-term benefits of Cornell NYC Tech are apparent and will be considerable. With that, I would like to thank you once again for the opportunity to testify and look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you. President Pinsky.
Thank you very much, Chairman Wepfren, and members of the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchise. I'm Seth Pinsky, president of the New York City Economic Development Corporation. I'm joined here by Zach Smith, EDC's chief operating officer. I'm pleased to speak with you today about the Cornell NYC Tech campus on Roosevelt Island. This historic project is one piece of the Bloomberg administration's broader efforts to promote science and engineering in New York City, and we believe that this campus will have a transformative impact on the city. After my presentation, I'll, of course, be happy to answer questions. Applied Sciences NYC was initiated in response to the economic downturn of 2008, as Mayor Bloomberg sought to identify a bold initiative that would have a major impact on economic growth. The initiative was developed after hundreds of conversations that the administration held with academic, business, and community leaders, during which we heard a consistent message: Around the globe, nearly all major centers of innovation have at their core a critical mass of applied sciences research and development and talent creation. Though we have excellent institutions of higher earning in New York City, in fact, some of the best in the world, given the size of our economy with a gross metropolitan product that is larger than Mexico's gross domestic product, and given the size of our ambition to be not just a leader but the leader in the innovation economy of the 21st century, we simply did not have enough of it. Responding to this, we launched the Applied Sciences NYC competition in December 2010. The competition made a proposal to universities both inside and outside of New York City. If a university were willing to make a significant incremental investment that would materially increase engineering activity here, we would provide land if needed, a monetary contribution, and technical assistance. Responses to this competition exceeded our expectation, both in terms of quality and quantity. In fact, in the competition's final round, we received proposals from 17 leading institutions from countries around the world. In December 2011, Mayor Bloomberg was able to announce the first winner of our competition, the historic partnership between Cornell University and the Technion Israel Institute of Technology. The partnership submitted a proposal that was both ambitious in scale and aggressive in timing, and brought with it a pledge of some $350 million in private philanthropy. As you know, at full buildout, the Cornell-Technion campus on Roosevelt Island will total 2 million square feet and will leverage a direct investment of $2 billion from the universities. The partnership's plans also call for a $150 million investment fund targeting New York City-based startups, as well as educational programming that will reach 10,000 public school students per year. To help get this partnership off the ground, just last week, Mayor Bloomberg announced a naming gift from Dr. Erwin and Joan Jacobs to found the Jacobs Technion Cornell Innovation Institute, a critical piece of the Roosevelt Island plan. As you've heard from Mr. Lee, the Cornell NYC Tech campus alone will have a dramatic impact on our city's economy, but this campus is only one piece of our broader efforts to cultivate science and engineering in the city. For example, in 2012, Mayor Bloomberg announced two additional winners of our Applied Sciences competition. The first is a consortium led by New York University and NYU Poly that also includes CUNY and Carnegie Mellon University, among other schools, as well as corporate partners such as IBM and Cisco. The project, being launched by this consortium, the Center for Urban Science and Progress or CUSP, opened in its temporary home in downtown Brooklyn earlier this month, with its permanent home to be completed in 2017. The third winner of our competition is Columbia University's Engineering School, which is creating a new institute for data sciences and engineering, in connection with which the school has pledged to increase its engineering faculty by some 50 percent. Beyond solving some of the great challenges of the 21st century, these three Applied Sciences projects will together cement New York City's status as a leader in innovation and help to secure New York City's economic future. Not only do these projects represent billions of dollars in new direct investment, we also predict that they will create more than 48,000 permanent and construction jobs over the next three decades. Over the same period, we anticipate that they will spin out nearly 1,000 companies, creating thousands of indirect jobs. Perhaps most importantly, the campuses together will, at full buildout, collectively more than double the existing number of full-time graduate engineering students in New York City. In sum, these campuses will help to sustain industries in which we have traditionally been strong and to spur growth in new industries with great promise in the 21st century. As you can see, Applied Sciences NYC is a far-reaching effort that we believe will strengthen our economy for years to come. For us to be successful in our goal of turning New York into the capital of innovation in the 21st century, though, we know that top-quality research and training at the highest level is a necessary ingredient, but alone is not sufficient. That's why the administration's strategy consists of a wide range of additional elements. For example, partnering with CUNY, New York City College of Technology and IBM, in 2011, the administration, through the Department of Education, launched a new computer-science-focused high school, Pathways in Technology, Early College and High School, or PTEC, located in Crown Heights, Brooklyn. Earlier this year, the school was heralded by President Obama in his State of the Union address as a model for innovative technology-based solutions. The school runs through the 12th grade and provides students with the opportunity to receive an associate's degree as well, meaning that students will graduate not only with a strong background in computer science, but also with the training to begin working at IBM and other technology companies right here in New York. Meanwhile, a second new public school with a computer-science focus, the Academy for Software Engineering, opened near Union Square last year, and you've heard about that from Mr. Lee. And yet another example of our commitment to bringing the benefits of the innovation economy to the broadest possible population. Last summer, we launched NYC Generation Tech, a technology entrepreneurship program for promising New York City high school students. The program, which focuses on those with disadvantaged backgrounds who are interested in pursuing careers in computers and technology, includes a summer boot camp and a successful mentoring program. Our plan is to run the program again next coming summer. Mayor Bloomberg recently launched yet another science-related program, the so-called Link Initiatives. These initiatives include pilot training programs providing New Yorkers who lack advanced training with the skills they need to obtain jobs in sectors critical to the 21st century economy, like healthcare and technology. Through initiatives like these, we are taking action right now to nurture the talent of promising technologists in many different ages to ensure that they have the skills necessary to work at and create companies right here in New York City. With the continued support of the city council, we at EDC and in the Bloomberg administration are confident that the Cornell NYC Tech campus, the Applied Sciences NYC initiative more broadly, and the many other initiatives to expand opportunities in the innovation economy launched under Mayor Bloomberg will help us to achieve our goal of making New York the world's hub of innovation, propelling us to success in the years ahead. In our increasingly competitive global economy, achieving this goal is no longer just a luxury, but is an imperative upon which our economic future literally depends. I would be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Pinsky. And I'm Councilmember Lappin had a question for you.
Good afternoon. It's nice to see you here, and I understand this has been a project that you've been very proud of, as you should be, something you've been working on for a long time and was a great idea. And so now we're just in the details of finalizing this portion of your idea. And I have a number of questions that I'm going to keep for Cornell, but I have a number of questions for you, and I'm just going to dive right in because I know time is of the essence. So one, and this was in Mr. Lee's testimony, where you mentioned that the Cornell campus, Cornell Alliance, is already off to a fast start with their commitment to create education enhancement programs for 10,000 students and 200 teachers, and I wanted to ask how that is being implemented.
So the programs that they've already agreed to and they can speak to in some more detail involve them linking up with local city schools. And so I think there are a number of them that they've already been in discussions with on Cornell's son partnership. And so whether they have faculty staff working with the schools, and I think they're not just on Roosevelt Island, I believe there's one on Roosevelt, but the other three are in other parts of the city focused on technology.
I certainly will, and I've been talking with them specifically about the school on the island, but they have never, at least to my recollection, given me a number of 10,000 students and 200 teachers, although I could be wrong about that. I know they're working with girls that code this summer, although I think that was already underway. They're participating in a coalition, so I wouldn't say that they're responsible for that.
Right.
So I just wanted, before I ask them, and I will, I just wanted to know what you were talking about.
Sure. So the 10,000 students and the 200 teachers, that was something that was agreed to during the selection process, something that Cornell's committed to doing. Obviously, they're ramping up, and they don't have necessarily the staff and faculty to do that right now, but that is a commitment that's in their commitment with the city.
Yeah, and the expectation is that as the school grows, they will approach that 10,000-student level, and they've been working with DOE to put pilot programs into place at the same time that they're creating their Beta Class in West Chelsea. And as they're hiring faculty, as they're hiring staff, they'll then increase the size of those initiatives.
Okay. I'm not sure we're there yet on that, so we can discuss that a little bit more, but I think that's still sort of in formulation. And you're thinking by 2037, they'll have a program in place for 10,000 students? What exactly did they commit to? I understand they're not on Roosevelt Island yet, they're still staffing up, but I wouldn't expect this to be in place, and I'm very clear on that, next year or even necessarily the year after, but just so I know, what you think the agreement was?
Yeah, we can, I can confirm the exact date, although it's hard to do it, but it's certainly not 2037. It's once the campus is open and operational on Roosevelt Island, they're expected to have these programs in place. And again, they are working with DOE to make sure that these programs don't just meet Cornell's needs and Technion's needs, but also the needs of the Department of Education itself. And so they're looking at a whole host of opportunities, things like competitions, science fairs, on-campus activities, mentoring, internships, et cetera.
Okay. I mean, I know that this is very much part of Cornell's mission and something that they are focused on, I'm just not sure if we have the mechanism in place yet to get there, so that's something we're going to have to keep talking about. I wanted to ask you about security. This is something that has obviously come up again and again, mostly in part because of the partnership between Cornell and Technion. And I don't, there are at least half a dozen temples in my district I can name off the top of my head that have a police car stationed in front 24/7. And I'm not getting sort of a straight answer on exactly what the administration thinks will be the plan in place for security and who will be responsible for that. And I say that because in our conversations with the police department, at least last, we were told that basically the PD just constantly reevaluates how they deploy resources and had referred Cornell to a document online. So what's your understanding of the police department's commitment to do security and anti-terrorism work around this site?
Well, this will be a private institution, and obviously the first line of defense will be theirs. But the police department does, in fact, evaluate potential targets. It's not clear at this point that this necessarily will be a target, but it's something that the police department will look at, like they look at Israeli-affiliated institutions all over the city, and will make the appropriate determinations based on, you know, the best available intelligence and information once the campus is actually open. The PD will certainly be responsible for public safety here as they are throughout the city, and the expectation is that they'll work with the campus and with the institutions to make sure that the appropriate city presence is there in addition to the private security presence.
Why wouldn't the police department start to evaluate that prior to the campus opening?
I mean...
So we helped to start that conversation, and so Cornell has briefed the police department on their plan to understand, and they understand that the specifics around what's going to be built still need to be finalized. Nonetheless, they realize that there's going to be a significant number of students in that on the island, and so I think it's safe to say that this is the beginning of the conversation, and obviously the police department will make the resources available to make sure it's secure when the campus is open.
That's what I'm, so I think that's what I'm worried about. So the three pieces, there's the how they build the building to withstand threats and the materials that are used, et cetera. So that's sort of one distinct piece that I do think, at least there's been some back and forth in discussion on. Then there is the counterterrorism piece that is raised by the fact that it is an Israeli institution. And then there's the separate piece, which is there's going to be greater population on the island, and with that, we would assume that you would need greater police forces to deal with that. So I'm not so worried about how they construct the building. I'm much more concerned about both the counterterrorism and then the greater public safety piece. And when you are all gone in five months or however many days, that that will be sort of seen through. So what can be done now to get the police department thinking about the resources that will be required when this is open?
We can engage in further conversation with you and with them. Again, there are Israeli-affiliated institutions all over the city. The police department, I think, has a very good track record of ensuring their safety, and they will do exactly the same thing here that they do for any potential target anywhere in the city. If you want to have a further conversation and engage in more detail with the police department, we can certainly arrange that.
Okay. I would like that, I'd like for you to be a part of that. I think maybe we would get some more better response, and I think they do do a great job. That's why I want to make sure that they are prepared to do it. And in just the history here, it's a place where it's in Manhattan, you access it through Queens. Historically, there's been a lot of "it's not our problem, it's that precinct," "oh, but it's the lowest crime rate in this precinct," and a lot of people pointing fingers and not wanting to take responsibility. So that's something we need to continue to work on. Ferry service, our favorite topic, Mr. Pinsky. So, you know, the applicant is interested in having ferry service, and that, I mean, Cornell-Technion, certainly it's something, you know, I'm very interested in, and there are going to be more people coming to the island, we hope, through public transportation and not driving. So where do you think we are on ferry service to the island?
Well, I think the good news about Roosevelt Island is it's very well-served currently by public transportation, especially the bus service. There's also the tram and the subway. The likely traffic that will come to this campus will, in most cases, be against the traditional commuting patterns, which also is a positive. We are certainly open to exploring ferry service on Roosevelt Island. It's something that we've discussed with you in the past. We're in the process of launching a new citywide ferry study. As you know, the earlier citywide ferry study indicated that in order to bring ferry service to Roosevelt Island, there were two major obstacles, one of which was construction of a landing, and the other of which is payment of an operating subsidy. At the moment, funds are not available for either of those, but again, we've always been open to certainly the idea of ferry service to Roosevelt. We think there's a certain logic to it, and we're happy to continue those conversations.
I would like to take the idea and the exploration to actuality. There has been money available, just only we won't release it, as you know well, so that's not accurate, money that I have put there over the years, and...
And just to clarify, and I know we've had long and detailed conversations about this, but the amount of money that's in the budget likely is not enough to do the capital construction. It's actually very expensive to build in water in New York City, and then there still is the question of the operating subsidy. But I do acknowledge that there is money that you have put into the budget that certainly gets us closer than we otherwise would be.
And I think we've certainly had some estimates that were a lot lower than the estimates that, as of last week or two weeks ago, they all planned. I think your latest estimate was five to eight million, and there are others who've built on the island, who have experience developing on the island, who had a much lower estimate. So I think we just got you, not just, but we have your breakdown of how you got to that number. We do want to go back and forth, but I would like to get to a yes here, whether that means using city capital dollars or not using city capital dollars, to find a way to have a plan and please to do this.
Yeah, and what I would just say with respect to the cost estimates, there is nothing that has frustrated me more in this job than the cost of construction in water in New York City. The estimates that we've given you are the estimates based on our experience, and we've actually built a lot of these around the city. If there are others who have ways for us to save money and to do this in a more cost-effective way, we are more than happy to listen to the ideas.
Okay. I assume Mr. Lee is staying?
Yes.
Okay. Because the rest of my questions at this point are for the Cornell team, but if something else pops up, then we'll bring you back. Thanks.
I'd like to call on Councilmember Comrie now, has some questions for you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I just want to say that I've been an early supporter of this concept, and I applaud the administration for putting together the idea for an Applied Sciences-focused and bringing the opportunities to come today where we are working with three different projects now, which is, you know, something I know that I spoke to you about privately, about making sure that we had more than one bid and more than one of the 17 bidders to continue to be involved, since there clearly is an excitement around it, it's something that is exciting. I just also though want to make sure that the entire city is benefiting from this, and can you explain a little bit more in detail about what you plan on ensuring that this Applied Science will be rolled out to all of New York City schools? I know you glossed over it in your presentation, but if you could talk about it a little bit more in depth.
So as I mentioned in my testimony, and as Mr. Lee mentioned in his, there is the work that Cornell and the Technion are doing with the creation of the programs for 10,000 public school students. They're also working to develop programs that will benefit students on Roosevelt Island specifically. Some of the other campuses also have outreach programs. The Columbia campus will be working through the community benefit agreement that they signed in connection with the Manhattan build expansion to bring educational programs to city schools. And the CUSP campus at NYU is also going to be developing a few new programs, including sponsoring a single school somewhere in the city, and they're in the process of identifying the school and also developing a new program, which I believe is called I2E, which is designed to try to bring the benefits of science and technology education to students throughout the five boroughs. And as I said, that is really just one part of the broader set of initiatives that we've undertaken to try to bring science and technology education more broadly to city students. We believe very strongly that if we're going to be strong as a city going forward, it's not just about training the best and the brightest at the highest level, but also ensuring that we have the basic skills throughout our economy. And I know that the Department of Education, in addition to launching the schools that I referenced in my testimony, is in the process now of rolling out a significant expansion of those programs.
All right. It sounds good. I just want to make sure that the best and the brightest that we train on New York City residents and not non-residents that are coming in, so I would hope that, you know, as we move towards creating the opportunities for sciences and applied sciences, that 20 years from now, it's not all, you know, people that are moving into the city, but it's actually our New York City kids that are the major part of those programs, a major part of students in those programs as well.
And I think if we're successful, it will be a combination of both.
Just to continue to highlight that, because my next question is about the city's commitment to infrastructure, to the Roosevelt Island campus and surrounding campus as well, just I would hope that whatever's done on the educational level is put together with a long-term vision and a sustainable vision, because as you only have seven months left, or I forget how many days, I don't do the day count, but as we move out to the end of the year, I hope that it's something that will match the common core curriculum and cost of order, and there's an opportunity for all of the schools to visit all three Applied Science centers, all of the schools in the city to take advantage of visitations, because I think those are the types of things that will continue to encourage young people to want to stay involved in the sciences, and I hope that those linkages are deep and sustained as well. Just wanted to know, what are you doing as far as the development of a possible with the increased transportation to the campus and to Roosevelt Island about additional transportation opportunities other than ferry? To long-term look at the, to increase the ability of the subway to stop or putting another subway line, or has anything been done at that level of review to make sure that there's a long-term opportunity to increase public transportation to the... that there's a long-term opportunity to increase public transportation to the island, to both parts of the island?
Sure. I think that transportation both on the island and getting to the island is obviously a priority for us. As the campus is being built, the need doesn't necessarily change in the near term, although you'll have a fair amount of construction activity and traffic that's related to that. I think we all recognize that having a sizable number of people now on Roosevelt Island, and slightly different population than what's there now, will have an accident need to be addressed, and I think Cornell and the city are...
And have you worked out a construction plan to ensure that the residents of the island won't have a problem with getting transportation back and forth to the island, or that these supplies and the heavy materials that are coming to the island will be handled in a way that is as minimal as possible disruptive to the residents of the island and to the traffic going back and forth?
Yeah, we and Cornell have heard that that's obviously a concern of local elected officials as well as the local community, and Cornell is working on an aggressive plan to deal with that, and they'll be able to talk in more detail about that in their testimony.
And is there any other infrastructure, or infrastructure monies or other opportunities that the city is bringing to the Roosevelt Island to upgrade the facilities on the other side of the island as well, to make it more accessible?
It's the city's investment, which is a $100 million contribution, is going to go towards ensuring that the infrastructure on the campus itself is adequate for its uses, and that the overall infrastructure on the island isn't overburdened because it's inadequate on the southern end. And so Cornell has, again, an extensive plan to connect their new campus into modern infrastructure systems.
Would that upgrade for the rest of the island, to increase the tram, or to, you know, just add any other infrastructure improvements to make transportation a little bit easier?
Well, again, it's something that we've certainly, we investigated as part of the environmental review, it's something that we know that we're going to be engaging with you and Councilmember Lappin on as we go through the ULR process. The initial analysis indicates that at least for the foreseeable future, that the existing transportation systems will be able to accommodate the additional traffic, with the exception of during construction, which as I mentioned, Cornell will be working on a plan of work and can talk about. But we're certainly more than happy to continue to engage in that conversation.
And as the campus is being built, is there going to be a need to acquire more temporary space? Well, they are growing now, because their first construction will be completed in 2017?
Yeah, the expectation is that the space that they have at Google's headquarters will be sufficient to carry them through there.
But what if they're startup companies that want to start up as a result, or will they be an opportunity to link with EDC to try to find space?
Yeah, we're constantly working with startup businesses, many of which express interest in trying to take advantage of the momentum that we, everyone believes is going to come off of this campus, and we've been heavily engaged with them, and a lot of people are, I think, very seriously looking at space in Long Island City as a location, by way of example, as a place where they'll be able to benefit from the campus once it opens.
Okay. So that was leading away to my next question. Have you embraced the idea of developing a tech park along the city and supported this project? And I see Jupe is here, who's probably testified later, but just want to put in a plug to try to make sure that that's part of the city's focus and...
We absolutely believe that Long Island City is going to become a great center of technology as a result of this campus, and we are, we have certainly been in constant contact with Jupe and many of his associates, and with many of the companies that are already locating there, and are trying to think of ways that we can enhance that growth.
Right. Again, I want to thank you again, as I said in the beginning, I've been a supporter of this project and the concept, but then it's a great opportunity to generate economic development in the city, I just want to make sure that the entire city will continue to benefit from it, and the opportunity to stimulate young people to be involved in applied sciences, hopefully with the county core curriculum, that we can, you know, hopefully get these campuses to donate, you know, supply of science labs to every building in the city, and even more tutors to, you know, teach our children at every level, I think it's a great opportunity as well, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Be aware, they'll only do that if it's on the standardized test, otherwise they won't be going there. I just want to get a statement, too, even though I got elected to the role of president, and not that that's why they were doing it, but I want to just be on the record, too, of being very excited about this plan, and I got to compliment the mayor for being the brainchild behind it. We have a lot of, a lot of big dreams for this campus, both the Manhattan people and the Queens people as well, I'm sure these two colleagues of mine will have a lot to say about that in the future, but we do think it's a great thing with great opportunities in Queens, and for the tech community, and no one can be hearing from a lot of people later on on this topic. So we want to thank you, thank you very much for coming. We are going to have to take a couple-minute break while they just set up the PowerPoint, is it, for the screen, so that'll be just a couple of minutes it'll take to set them up. In the meantime, I'll call up the panel just...